Select Board to order. The first item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda on which there are town accountants' warrants and minutes to approve from June 29, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So move. Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note that it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the town manager's update. Mr. Town Manager?
Hi. Good evening, all. My first item is that it is a peak demand for power today and probably for most this week because of the heat wave. Because of that, I will be brief to not use up unnecessary power. So it is anything folks can do to reduce consumption, there's stuff on our website about, our CMLP's website, about ways to do that, maybe not have the air conditioning going as hot or turn lights off when you don't need them. But we want to avoid, you know, getting beyond our capacity. The other thing I'll say is CMLP has been instrumental in doing some infrastructure work for us to help prepare for our town meeting at the Doug Whitefield. So I want to commend them for making it so we can have internet connections and so the meeting can, you have to have, you have to have internet to have one of those meetings now. So we are working. Hopefully, the equipment that we need will also be delivered in a timely manner. There's a water main project that's about to begin in the Peter Springs Road area. They, the CPW staff are going to be conducting socially-distanced field meetings with residents in that area. They'll be, they'll be doing door hangers this week to notify people that the project is coming. It's going to be a significant infrastructure project in that neighborhood. So, you know, folks just be mindful of that. The water restriction for watering one day a week is still in effect. So people are reminded to only water for one hour once a week during the, even though we've had some rain, the drought conditions are still, still remain. And then paving, there'll be additional paving at Cambridge Turnpike this week. And I don't know, I mean, it's a dead end right now because it's still closed, but I was down there a week or so ago, and it really is coming together nicely, and it's going to be a beautiful project when it's done. I know 1440 Main Street was a much-discussed project last fall. A new set of plans has been submitted for that project, and they're under review. However, there was six house lots that were created by virtue of an approval-not-required plan, an A&R plan. And so the work on those houses, which has already been approved, is beginning. So if you go out there, you can see, I was out there last week in there doing tree work. So that's a result of previously-approved permits. I know we mentioned that we received that award for the community development block grant, COVID-19 economic development grant. We still are waiting on documentation from, from the town of Ashland, who's kind of spearheading this. As soon as we do, we will get it out as broadly as we can. And then I'm pleased to report that both nights of our pop-up drive-in are fully subscribed. So it'll be a nice community event. The first one is Thursday night at eight, and the next one is the 13th. So it's going to be, I guess it's going to be a fun night, and Beth Williams, our tourism coordinator, really deserves a lot of credit. And Rick Cleary, who's a volunteer, really deserves a lot of credit for just getting their, getting their heads together and getting this done. It's going to be a fun night. That's it for me.
Thank you. Does the Select Board have any questions? The Town Manager? Jane?
I just have one question that's been brought up to me by various neighbors. I'm, I'm across the street from 1440, or relatively across the street, down a few houses. And in many of the public hearings held on various plans for, for the debt development, there was always going to be a saving of the trees or a significant portion of the trees that abut on Main Street. This beginning of these six house lots has saved two trees that seem to be dead on their, on a, I mean, they're, they look relatively dead as it is, and has clear-cut all the others. Now, again, I'm not protesting this myself. I'm saying I've, I've been stopped by quite a few neighbors saying, you know, what's the plan?
Well, I think there's the A&R plans, and I know Matt could probably speak to this more professionally than I can. So if the Chair doesn't mind, I will mute myself.
Yeah. So Jane, you know, the options that we had to preserve trees were part of the planned residential development plan. And at the point that that was, you know, not pursued, and we had a subdivision plan, what the developer chose to do, as Stephen mentioned, is to create conforming lots along Main Street, which they could do with this, what they call approval-not-required process, which doesn't require any, you know, further permits or anything. And so they did that, and then those just become regular conforming lots. And so when that happens, they are subject to the tree preservation by law, but that, of course, you know, only provides for the setback area of each lot and then, you know, gives options for either replanting or paying into a tree fund versus preserving trees. So, you know, it looks like the developer chose, in this case, you know, to either contribute to the fund or we will see, you know, with replanting. And so you're seeing that clear-cutting, and it's an unfortunate, you know, consequence, I would have to say, you know, of the plan that they have moved forward to with as opposed to a planned residential development. Now, we, we did just receive the definitive subdivision plan, and that will apply to the remainder of the lot. And there is some review, you know, which is related more to the layout of the roads and street trees along the sidewalk and things like that. It, it will, in the end, create more conforming lots that in themselves will have similar kind of relationship to tree preservation and so on as the ones that you see along Main Street.
There any other questions for the Town Manager? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is Chair's remarks. I have a couple of remarks and a statement to read. First, just to remind everyone that we will have rescheduled public hearings August 17, which is a Select Board Finance Committee public hearing, and then a Finance Committee public hearing on the 18th, and a Planning Board public hearing on the 19th. I will see that the schedule of the articles that are going to be held at each of these hearings is posted on the town website, and there is appropriate notice made. Last Select Board meeting, we talked about how we were going to proceed with the warrant articles that we have yet to take a position on. I want to report that Article 48, which was the HDC nominating article, is not going to be moved. So there are only three articles that are not going to be heard at public hearings that we could take positions on, and those are Articles 45, 46, and 47 on the warrant. And so I will ask Jeremy to include taking positions on these three articles at our next Select Board meeting on August 3. And then, as we talked about last time, following the public hearings in that week of August, we will schedule a Select Board meeting, as will the Finance Committee, to take positions on those articles so that Finance can, Report can get off to the printer, and then back something will be mailed to everybody in available ten days before our annual town meeting. I just want to alert you, the Select Board, also that at our next Select Board meeting, I hope, I want to have a discussion about some kind of accommodation to liquor license fees. That's been approached, we've been approached a couple of times on that. I need to get more facts at our disposal before we can really discuss it, but I'll try to have that on the agenda for our next Select Board meeting. Yes, Terry?
A question on the articles we're going to take up next week. You said 45, 46, 47. Remind me what happened with 41 and 42? Those are petition articles?
Those petition articles, 41 and 42, will be, they will be reviewed at the Planning Board public hearing. So we'll take a position upon those after the Planning Board has.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And then I have the following statements that I would like to make. Following several months of attempting to negotiate an agreement with the defendants to reopen the unpaid portion of the Esterbrook Road, the Select Board had no alternative other than to file a motion for preliminary injunction with the land court to preserve the public's right of access pending completion of litigation. The Select Board also asked the court for a status conference to explore options for a prompt final resolution of the lawsuit. The judge held a hearing on the town's motion on July 20. On July 23, he issued an order granting the town's motion for preliminary injunction. The order prohibits the defendant's quoting "from gating, closing, blocking, or otherwise interfering with public access to Esterbrook Road, Esterbrook Trail, or any part thereof", and from maintaining or posting any signage on or near Esterbrook Trail designed, intended, or intending to have the effect of discouraging or prohibiting public access to said Esterbrook Road or Esterbrook Trail. The court's full order is, will be posted on the town's website. In reaching its decision, the judge concluded that the town's central claim in the litigation, that the public retains a right of access over Esterbrook Road, and again quoting, "has a sufficient likelihood of success on the merits," and that, quoting again, "deprivation of longstanding public access to a hiking trail is a harm that is irreparable to the town and to the public interest." The judge also acknowledged that the town was acting on behalf of the public interest and not simply on its own behalf. The judge, after reviewing the defendant's submission and walking much of the Esterbrook Trail himself from the closed entrance north, rejected the defendant's argument that COVID-19 pandemic justified the resort to self-help to close public access. The judge also rejected defendant's argument that the public had sufficient access to Esterbrook Woods and that the trail from other locations in Concord, and found instead that the public interest is irrationally harmed by the loss of the particular access closed by the defendants. The court order also adopted the town's proposal to post signs to the trail regarding appropriate use and public safety. The town first proposed its signage to the defendants shortly after defendants closed off access in early April, but the defendants were not satisfied. Consistent with the town's proposal, as adopted by the court, the town asks the public to continue to protect the efforts the town has made to preserve public access by trading Esterbrook Road and the abutting private property respectfully, and to abide by appropriate masking and social distancing. Accordingly, signs have been posted at or near the trail that reads as follows. Notice by the town of Concord. The public may use this path, subject to the posted rules. All dogs are to be leashed at all times while on Esterbrook Road. The trail users are to remain on the path and respect the private, excuse me, respect the property and privacy of the surrounding landowners. In accordance with the Board of Health and Concord, you must wear a mask if you are unable to maintain a distance of at least six feet from others. You may be subject to civil and criminal penalties for violation of these requirements. Although the court has not yet made a final decision on the merits of the case, we have been advised by the courts that our trial will be scheduled this fall, and we look forward to a prompt resolution of the case. In the meantime, the town is gratified that the court recognized the strengths of the town's case claim and issued an order that permits the public to continue to access the southern entrance to the unpaid portion of the Esterbrook Road. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing about the agreement between the town and the Library Corporation. Let me say before I ask for a motion to open the public hearing that, for reasons I don't know, the Library Committee, which was scheduled to meet last week and to discuss this matter, was not able to meet. So to make sure they do have a chance to meet and discuss this, why, we will continue with the public hearing this evening. After the close of the public hearing and the Select Board's deliberations, the Select Board will not vote on the agreement this evening. Instead, I have communicated with the Library Committee and asked them to please have their written comments or questions submitted to me by the end of the week. I will distribute them to the Select Board. We will put the item on our agenda for our August 3 meeting and take into consideration those questions or comments raised by the Library Committee. So with that said, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. You're muted, Susan.
So move.
I'd like you to read the motion, if you could, please.
Yeah. Move to open the public hearing?
And is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you very much. I noticed, I noted that it passes unanimously. Before we turn to public comments, I would like to go through each of the various sections of the public hearing. And could I introduce Sheri and Mario, who are from the Library Corporation, who worked with Stephen and me to develop this agreement? And I don't know whether Sheri or Mario is going to take the lead, but I'd sort of like to walk through the various sections of the new agreement and sort of point out in summary form, without going into any detail, the kind of substantive change that was made. Is that task going to fall to Mario or Sheri? Well, whichever of you wishes to talk should first unmute themselves.
Hi. I'm Sheri Litwack. I, I think Mario and I are going to share the tasks. Mario, you can unmute yourself as well, please. And also going to open up the document that Mario had helped create to summarize some of the differences. So let me just open up the agreement, and I assume that everybody who needs the agreement has it. And I am opening it myself. Okay. Great. So I'll just begin by saying, I think, as you all know, the current agreement is from 2009. And because there are things in this agreement that I think both the Library Corporation and the town thought could be and should be clarified, we agreed that we would take another look at that agreement and see if we could, in fact, do that, especially in terms of what our responsibilities are and what the town responsibilities are. And so that process, actually, I think we, we believe, and I, I think that the Town Manager and Select Board Chair would also agree, was a very productive process. It went over many months, and I think Steve encountered that we had at least 16 versions of it with, you know, with changes going back and forth. Of course, we started to meet in person and then continued through Zoom. So we, we believe that there are quite a few improvements in this, particularly in terms of clarifications. There are also some new things, and I'm sure people will have questions about the new things, which we're more than happy to address. Mario, how, I don't know if you have your memo with you, but do you feel comfortable kind of bringing people's attention to some of the significant changes?
Well, the memorandum kind of goes through, in general terms, each of the sections. And I don't know, Mike, whether or not you want me to do that, or do you want to do that? I'm just, just.
Why don't I do the following? I'll sort of tee up each of the sections.
Okay.
Very quickly, sort of summarize, one moment, Jane, summarize the proposed changes there, and then allow you to, or Stephen, to further comment on that. Jane, you had a question?
I just wanted the, the two Library Corporation speakers to identify themselves, because not everybody's had the benefit of meeting them.
Of course, of course. So I'm Sheri Litwack, and I'm the, the President of the Library Corporation.
And I'm Mario Favreto, and I'm the Vice President of the Corporation.
Right. Thank you very much. All right. So the first, the first section of the agreement is the section on the library mission. And in the new agreement, it was a matter of refining the language in there and to provide a clearer statement of the library's mission. And they did that with four bullet points, essentially providing access, maintaining referral capabilities, professional skills in employees, and making Concord aware of the services that the library provide. So do either of you have comments on that? All right. Section two is a section on the library policies. And in this section, again, it was a matter of trying to simply clarify the policies and to make it clear that the corporation and the town each have responsibilities for those policies over which they have control. And I think it was important that we added language in that section to make it clear that in setting policies under by the corporation, by the town, that we would not be consistent with one another, and in fact, they should be consistent. Do either of you have additional comments, or Stephen comments on that section? All right. Section three is section on town and corporations' responsibility. A lot of activity here, but again, I would characterize this as trying to clarify sets of responsibilities here. And so it made it clear what the town's responsibilities were in terms of library operations and services, and the corporation's responsibility essentially for maintenance, regulating the grounds and special collections, making investments and the like, fundraising and scholarships, and making use of vault space, for which there is a particular language in a section later in the document. Comments on that?
Mike, if I, I just, I didn't jump in quick enough on section two. I just want to note that one of the things that we did amend there is, is making sure that in terms of the development of library policies, you know, the, the Library Committee was inserted by reference as, as having a role in kind of, in coordinating with the Town Manager on the, on policy development. That was something that we added new, so I just wanted to note that.
Correct. Thank you. Section four is the administration. We spent a considerable amount of time on this. And again, it was trying to clarify responsibilities for each of the principal officers of the library, and first dealt with the library director, and making clear that the library director is overall supervision of all library staff and is essentially the chief operating officer of, of the library. And we enumerated quite extensively a list of 14 responsibilities that the library director had. Section, comments on section four? Section five talks about the ownership of the property. And it talks about essentially who owns what. And again, cleaned up a lot of language, but it's clear that owned by the corporation is the land landscaping, buildings, furnitures, fixtures, books, quite extensive list of things. The town also has ownership for books, periodicals, electronic media, and other sorts of things. But that was just mostly editorial work in that section.
Oh, excuse me, Mike, just to say, to make it clear that anything that the town, like those specific things that the town paid for, that technically they would own those things. Yeah.
All right. Section six talks about, again, responsibilities, this time of the director and the curator, and also talks about special collections and vault space. So the first two parts of that section enumerate essentially or describe the library director's responsibilities. Makes it quite clear that the director is an employee of the town, but it lays out in that language that in review, review and appointing a library director or terminating it, that the town would reach out in a particular way to the corporation to get their input. With respect to part two of section six, this is the curator, about, about the curator. And it talks about the curator, especially with respect to special collections, and managing the main library art gallery. And similarly with, as with the director, that consultation between the town and the corporation with respect to establishing new or terminating existing services. I don't know if any of you want to comment. I know we spent quite a long time on that section, but.
Yeah, I think it was a lot of roles and responsibilities that, over time, you know, need clarification or like, like a, like a new shoe you wear for a while, and you're walking in it, and eventually it kind of gets loose, and you need to, you know, do something to shrink it up a little bit so everything starts, the form starts to, or starts to regain its, its intended form. And so I don't, I wouldn't say there was radical alternation, alterations. I would just say it was more of a clarification of roles and responsibilities.
Right. I would, I would agree with that. And because it's, because the corporation actually owns the special collections, it had to be clear what our relationship is with the curator and what it isn't. And so I think we were able to clarify that here.
And it also concludes in that section, pointing out that, or making it clear that in appointing or terminating a curator, the library director will seek the opinion of the corporation president. And the same is true for evaluating the curator. Section, section seven is library maintenance. And this was something that we spent a lot of time on, and frankly, is not quite finished yet. But essentially, the point is that we would all be better off if the town sort of took over regular maintenance of the library. It would be able to take advantage of some economies of scale by using existing personnel that it uses on the rest of its buildings. And so in the particular agreement here, I'll just read you the first sentence. Corporation and town agree that there is mutual benefit in developing a memorandum of understanding specifically for the maintenance of the library's buildings and structures. And it goes on to talk about how it would be accomplished. We haven't yet completed that, but we've agreed to have this, it's a little more complicated than it might appear at first flush, but we agreed to have this, more you completed by December 31 of this year. And it will either, we will either come back then to the Select Board with an amendment to Article seven, or just have it be a freestanding, freestanding component of it. Do anybody want to add anything? Stephen, you've been working with Mr. Adams, as I recall, on this.
Yeah, we, we were working with Jeff Adams, and really, in part because of the pandemic, but also part of, in part because of avail, of our own lack of time as we plan for other municipal buildings that we already have maintenance responsibility for. We just weren't able to get our facilities division to get together in a detailed way with, with Jeff and the corporation about, you know, what could this look like? Well, how would things be communicated? But I think we all agree that we could do it, we think, more nimbly and more, I think, more economically than having it be all vendors. And we also want to make sure that we clearly define capital. capital expenses from maintenance expenses and have a methodology for sorting out when a project comes up that may, you know, be in the gray area. We want to make sure we have a way of analyzing that to determine if it's maintenance or capital. But we, you know, there was a couple of, there was a couple of circumstances where town facility staff did go and fix a problem at the library simply because it needed to be fixed and they couldn't get contractor or a vendor in there in a timely manner. We were happy to do it, but that kind of put us on the mind like, geez, maybe, you know, every, it is the corporation's building, but almost everyone that works in there is a town employee. And so we view it as a, we have a vested interest in making sure that that space works for the employees as well as the patrons. And so I think there, I think we'll be able to figure it out pretty easily. It's just been really having the bandwidth to really deal with it.
And I just wanted to add a little bit to that, Stephen. Thank you. In case anyone doesn't know, Jeff Adams is a library trustee and he is the chair of the, the building committee, which is one of the standing committees of the Library Corporation. And he, he is the one who's been dealing with the library director with, with the, the library maintenance. And as you can imagine, there, there can be calls. The library director lives in New Hampshire. There can be calls in the middle of the night. And Jeff is always the one who comes and, and takes a look at what's going on and tries to address it as best he can at, at that time. But I think it's really also important to know that while we're discussing the possibility of, of the town sort of managing some of this, this, this maintenance, the Library Corporation would still be paying for it. So we would be involved in, in terms of estimates, you know, and approvals, you know, in terms of the, the payment and that kind of thing. But I wasn't sure if that was clear to everyone that the Library Corporation would still be paying for that maintenance.
Yeah. One, one of the reasons why we are sort of embracing this is that in a couple of instances in the past, we found that the town was able to do some repair work much more efficiently and less expensively than our outside vendors. So the thought was, well, let's see if we can put something together that makes it work for everyone and lowers, lowers the cost. But as Sherri mentioned, the bottom line is that the corporation will reimburse the town and, and assume the cost as we have in the past.
Right, thank you. That's, was an important clarification to make. All right. So section eight is budgeting. It simply lays out that the director shall initiate the library portion of the annual town budget. It also indicates that the corporation shall prepare a budget, which will provide for expenses of the library that are its responsibility and provides in there something that I think was new. In addition to a five-year capital plan, the corporation will also provide its audited financial statements to the town manager as soon as is practical. So section nine is library revenue sources. I think it was a fairly straightforward one, but while many of us who are involved in this understand and make a distinction between the town and the library, often, and the Library Corporation, often citizens in town don't. So we were in this section just being careful about how gifts come to the library. So sometimes people give gifts to the library or they giving it to the town or they giving it to the corporation. Sometimes it's clear, sometimes it's not. So we tried to include language in there that would clarify that as much as possible and then put language in talking about any ambiguity shall be resolved in the spirit of mutual cooperation and collaboration between the town and the corporation. Any other comments on section nine? Section 10 is library expenses and renovations. It laid out, again, a lot of clarification in there from the town's point of view. And I'll ask folks from the library to comment. From the town's point of view, I guess I'll just read this last paragraph. No renovation or expansion of library facilities that may increase library staffing materially impact the town's operating costs will be undertaken by the corporation without consulting among the library committee, the library director and the town, and the town manager. That was pretty much in there before, but what was added was mutual cooperation and collaboration and mindful of community goals set forth in the town's long-range plan. And we thought that was important for any public-private partnership that we have in town, that the, the private partnership has to be aligned with the town's long-range goals. So I think we're all pleased to see that in there. I don't know if Sherri or Mario or Stephen have any further comment on that.
Nope, we thought that is an improvement.
Section 11 talks about communication. It talks about the library developing a strategic plan that shall be initiated by the library director and the library committee. It talks about the library director proposing various programs to which the corporation may contribute as appropriate. And it talks also about from time to time, the library director shall provide opportunities for staff development and the president of the corporation and the town manager to make sure that we keep attuned to this agreement and try to get any issues that may come up in the, in regnum, that the president of corporation, the town manager shall meet at least twice annually to discuss the status of the library operations and the efficacy of this agreement. So those are the significant changes that we believe we got in place for this agreement. Before I turn to the public, does the select board have any questions that they would like to ask? I don't see any hands. Now I see a hand. Now I see two hands. Jane, yours was first.
I've got a couple of just typo questions that I can send it to, I guess Jeremy. They're not, they're just commas that seem to be missing, so.
Just, just send them along. Why don't you send them to me rather than Jeremy?
Okay. All right. And then some of this may be my own familiarity with the previous agreement and this one. But on the last, D, under section 11 communications, the president of the corporation, the town manager will should meet at least twice annually to discuss this status of library operations and the efficacy of this agreement. I'm just wondering if the, the public or the committee might be, since that would strike me as, as a review time, I'm sure that, that others would want to have some sense of input at that point, before anything was reviewed and either checked off or.
Well, I think this is aimed at the operations of the library. The way that the sentence reads, the president of the corporation, the town manager shall meet at least twice, twice annually, discuss the status of library operations.
And the efficacy of this.
And the efficacy. Well, I think meaning in, you know, are they operating in line with this agreement? So.
Really just a way to make sure that we just check in on a regular basis to say, how's it going? How, how is this relationship working? Are there areas of the MOU that haven't worked out like we thought they would? Are there things that we can, that we didn't cover in the MOU that need to be covered, stuff like that?
And I think if there are any significant adjustments that need to be made as a result of those meetings, those would come back to the select board.
Yeah.
And be subject to additional public hearing. Terry, I think your handle's up.
Right. So I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. I'm very pleased to see that the agreement clarifies a lot of reporting responsibilities, enhances communication and collaboration, and other important details. Thanks to everybody who worked on it. It's definitely strengthening the agreement. I do think it will be very important for the select board to get updates on section seven, on how the MOU is coming along with the maintenance. That's a very key area that's been unclear in the past. And we can see from the turnout tonight, there are lots of people from the public interested in this whole process. So we just ask that we try to keep, keep it very transparent as we move along.
We're making it as transparent as we can. We will bring, when the MOU is completed, we will bring it back to the select board for review and a hearing so everybody has a chance to comment on it. And then we'll try to figure out whether we want to actually amend this agreement to replace the current section seven with the MOU or similar language, or whether we just want to have the MOU be a freestanding document and have it referred to. So that will all come back to the select. Are there any other?
And one more, Rob, process question. So Mike, I'm not sure if I understood correctly. The library committee will be meeting, I believe, tomorrow and then sending in their comments. So are we going to be continuing the public hearing until next week or what is the procedure?
I wasn't planning on it. I was planning on getting as much input as we can now and then receiving, putting the item, the agreement back on the agenda again, but not necessarily a public hearing, although I really, I, I don't, to me, it doesn't matter as long as we make sure we've got input from folks tonight and from the library committee next week. So let me think about that as we hear other comments and maybe we can cycle back. Linda and then Susan.
Yeah, I too was happy to see some clarification for a lot of these areas. And I'm wondering if there are any other comments that could be made about section six and particularly talking about vault space and responsibilities there in terms of town archives and so forth.
Yep. So there's, this, this section, we spent a lot of time on, as I think Stephen mentioned. So we do have an agreement with the town related to the, the vault. And that really was not included in the, in the 2009 agreement. So we made sure that we added it here. And we also, the other piece that we really worked hard in clarifying is how the town archives relate to, not just the vault, but the special collections department, how it relates to the, to the responsibility of the curator. Because even though in the past, we tried to get that defined, it never actually was defined and it wasn't even a part of the library curator's job description. And so, and we were uncomfortable with that. And as you know, there are very specific responsibilities related to town archives. But the good news is that now that the town has a town archivist, the town archivist and the library curator are working very closely together and they both know their, their responsibilities. But we know that the archives are being handled appropriately and anything the library curator needs to know about that, she now does. So anyway, we just tried to make sure that we, we included those things in the agreement.
Thank you. And, and just a quick follow-up question to that. Are there concerns about space at this point?
In the, in the vault?
Yeah.
I think the way I would answer that is not immediately, but we do certainly think that in the future, there could be. And I think that's on both sides. You know, we, we, it was important that we note that the town archives that are intended to be in the vault and appropriate for the vault would be more of the historic town records for obvious reasons because researchers, for example, or even townspeople would, you know, those are what they might be using for research purposes. And so, but that being said, as you know, we have a world-class special collections. And we do have, we also have vault space in Fowler, which is good, which is not filled at this point. So we do have some, you know, room to expand. And then the town also probably has needs with, you know, just many, many town records and so might be looking at space, additional space as well. So I think in the future, we'll just, we'll talk and we'll see. But I think there's a good relationship now between the curator, the town archivist, the town clerk. So there will be a lot of communication in planning.
Thank you.
Susan?
Thank you. Yeah, I also want to add my thanks to everybody who worked on this. It sounds like you've clarified a lot of things for which I'm grateful. I do want to just touch on section seven. And I know you've been working on the agreement for months, but what would be the downside to not approving it until there's some clarity and the memorandum of understanding is in place for maintenance?
Well, I'm, the downside to me is we've made a lot of improvements here that we'd like to see get put in place and become operational. And postponing it for another, I don't know how long it's going to take to get this done, but two or three months, I don't, I don't see what the advantage of doing that. The MOU will come back, so we'll have an opportunity to fully discuss it. I, I just don't see, I don't see why.
The only comment, the only comment I might have is that we have a new curator. And this document with respect to how the curator, the new curator functions and the issue of the, the wall space is all put down here and it would be good to have that in place going forward. And, and one of the reasons why we decided the, that the MOU could, could be separate and apart from the agreement was to be able to deal with that separately because there's a lot of clarification in this agreement as it stands that would be very beneficial. And as Mike indicated, I, I don't see any good purpose in delaying putting that in place.
I guess I would, I would further add that some of the communication and cooperation that we need to develop the MOU is structured in this agreement in a way that is, really wasn't structured before. And I think it's right. I think we, we want to have this be a living document as soon as possible and then, you know, give us a little bit of time to be really thoughtful with the MOU.
Yeah. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Seeing none, I'm going to turn to the public now. I'm going to take folks as I see their hand up. Mr. Perry's hand is up, so he's going to be first in a moment. And then Mave is second, and then Diana's third. But, and then Jane, you're fourth. But I can tell you that my screen accommodates only 25 people. So there is another screen. So if I, if I miss somebody on a second screen, please unmute yourself and politely yell at me. So let's begin with Mr. Perry. Hello Ned, please identify yourself for the record.
Chairman, my name is Ned Perry. I'm at 362 Bedford Street. Thank, I'd first like to thank the library for working with the neighbors and the citizens of Concord to revise the proposed plans for the addition. And particularly thank Jeff Adams for modifying some of the Haywood Benjamin House plans, as well as announcing at the last HDC hearing that there will be a sustainability plan coming up in the future done by the corporation, which I think should be included in this, in this agreement, this draft agreement. But my major focus here is really based upon my participation in the Town Governance Study Committee back in 2014, on which I served and I was clerk of. And our report strongly recommended that the select board work to lessen the silo-type governance that we have in the town of Concord. And unfortunately, the draft agreement doesn't really reflect a movement away from that silo thinking. It's my understanding that at least in the beginning stages of the negotiation of this, the select board member who was representative of the select board to the library and particularly the library committee, didn't participate in the discussions. The library committee apparently hasn't seen it. I doubt many members of the staff of the town managers have seen it. In, in particular, the town clerk is referenced once, but the town documents are going over into the archives. And it seems to me the document should include the town clerk as, as a part of the administration of this. I don't think the document needs to be signed to be part of the living, working document. I don't think the document needs to be signed to be part of the living, working document that you all are working with. The draft memo on the website isn't identified as to who was interpreting the agreement, but now it turns out that it was really done by the library. So it's a relatively one-sided document. If this document, if the draft agreement went through 16 drafts, I agree with, I guess it was Ms. Hotchkiss, who said that there are a number of typos and grammatical errors in it. Someone needs to read through it. Mario Faberito is a champion lawyer. I, I finally, I find it, not finally, the second to last, I find it unfortunate that the Concord Administrative Code is left out of the first paragraph referencing the Town Library Committee. Mario's document talks about what's in here, but actually doesn't talk about what's been cut out, and a number of things, number of major things have been cut out. But, but the memorandum of understanding, paragraph seven, I hope the Select Board will not agree to this total amend draft agreement until that memorandum of understanding is in place and has been negotiated. Paragraph seven should be just like paragraph six, should be detailed. It's my understanding that the umbrella, formerly the Emerson umbrella, was given a pass on a memorandum of understanding before it opened. It planned its grand opening, the memorandum of understanding wasn't done. So they said, okay, we'll let you open, but we'll do the memorandum of understanding. I asked for that copy of that memorandum from the Select Board last Friday. It hasn't been forthcoming. I asked the town clerk to look for it this morning. It hasn't been forthcoming. The, there is a memorandum of understanding already relating to the library. It's required by the Planning Board for parking spaces relative to their addition. I think these types of memorandums of understanding should not be put off, and they, it's part of the whole working relationship. When I was chairman of the Library Committee many, 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 many years ago, I worked closely with the chairman of the corporation and the friends of the library, at that time Cherry Littwack, and we worked cooperatively. I don't see that happening right now, and I hope, I hope the Select Board members, new and old, will go back and look at page 21 of our report, which talked about the public-private partnership and how important it was to have the working relationships between the public and the private corporations and the town governance work together. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mav Pardee, do you wish to?
Sure. My name is Mav Pardee. I live at 87 South Street. I'm a member of the Library Committee. I've been a member for six years with my term extended because of the COVID until after town meeting. I've reviewed this draft agreement between the town and the library corporation, and I have a few comments. One of them is relatively minor, and the other is more serious. The first one, the minor one, is in Section 3, where we describe the town and corporation responsibilities on page three. There's a list of five items on which the town may make decisions and establish procedures, but there's no mention of staffing levels and supervision of staff. So I suggest that an item six be added that includes language to that effect. But the larger issue is more complex, and I've been kind of haranguing people about this for quite some time. I spoke to former town manager Chris Whalen. I've spoken with Stephen Crane about it. As noted in the draft agreement, the relationship between the town and the library corporation was established 150 years ago, and over time, the agreement has been renegotiated as needed with the last agreement in 2009. It's been a very successful partnership, but even so, it should comply with current laws, including compliance with conflict of interest, which is Mass. General Laws 268A. Since 1978, Massachusetts has had a state ethics commission that was designed to ensure integrity in public services and to prevent conflicts of interest between private interests and public duties. Our library is made up of two separate entities, the private nonprofit library corporation and the town, whose employees, including the library director and the curator, must comply with conflict of interest laws. Indeed, the draft agreement acknowledges that, quote, "all town library employees are subject to state ethics requirement," on page eight, Section 6. But Section 17(c) of the Conflict of Interest Law states, quote, "No municipal employee shall otherwise than in the proper discharge of his official duties act as an agent or attorney for anyone in connection with any particular matter in which the same city or town is a party or has a direct and substantial interest." Here in our agreement, in setting out the duties of the library director and the curator, the draft agreement specifies that the library director's duties include, quote, "support of the corporation's activities and responsibilities," end quote. That's on page four, Section four. And in the case of the curator, that employee, quote, "serves under the direction of the library director in coordination with the corporation." That's page six, Section six. The phraseology used in the draft is ambiguous, and it needs clarity. Does support of the corporation's activities call for affirmative acts involving third parties to carry out the corporation's activities? Might the library director under, be under a duty to engage in the corporation's fundraising activities? If so, would these activities not constitute acting as an agent for the corporation with respect to matters in which, given the close interdependent relationship of the town and the corporation, the town will have a, quote, "direct and substantial interest"? It's not at all my purpose to suggest that there's anything inherently untoward about a close working relationship between the town and the corporation that has proved to be so beneficial to Concord residents for such a long time. Rather, I suggest that greater clarity would put that relationship on a sounder footing under modern legal standards and expectations. The phrase in the Section 17 of the Conflict of Interest Law is quoted, that I quoted earlier, "otherwise than in the proper discharge of his official duties," suggests one way to mitigate any potential problems. So the library director's official job duties, as well as those of the curator and any other library staff, could be defined by bylaw, or perhaps in their pertinent job descriptions, to include which are permissible activities that such town employees may engage in on behalf of the library. But in any event, to avoid the appearance of conflicts and to ensure compliance with Mass. General Law 268A, I suggest that the Select Board recommend to the town manager, or more likely to town council, that the draft agreement and the relationships it describes be reviewed by the State Ethics Commission with particular attention to the items mentioned earlier in which the library employees are directed to support unspecified library corporation activities and responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. That's an important point. I appreciate it. Diane, I think you are up next.
Thank you, Mike. Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. Mike, you read, you read a paragraph, or portions of a paragraph, in Section 10, which you said, no renovations or expansion of library facilities, that increase, et cetera. But you didn't read the last sentence, and it was one of the ones I hoped you might discuss. The, and it reads, "The town may, subject to applicable law and the approval of the corporation, provide funds for any proposed library renovation or expansion." I wonder what that implies and what the limits of that support or funding might be.
I, I can, I think the intent there is, like in the case of the planned expansion project, it would be like furnishings and fixtures and things like that. So furniture, like desks, computers, things like that.
But in the past, those, those costs have been borne in a different way, and that's reason, I think, that, that, that rather expansive language or flexible language would perhaps profit by, by greater clarification, at least from my perspective.
It was also meant to allow, I think, for CPC appropriations.
Ah, okay.
But I take your point. Jean, I think you were next.
Thank you. I, I want to, to thank the Select Board for being willing to continue this vote until the Library Committee has an opportunity to review the agreement, and, and there can be more discussion about the MOU. So, oh, and I didn't introduce myself. I'm sorry. Jean Goldsberry, 1832 Main Street in Concord, and the former chair of, the former Public Private Partnership Study Committee. So we certainly applaud the idea on behalf of the, the library corporation and the town to find ways to reduce costs and, and handle things in the most effective and efficient way in terms of the maintenance for the library. But we really feel that it's important to have the MOU in its entirety included in the agreement, so that once, once the agreement is voted upon, the entire, the entire body of the agreement is, is part of that vote. One of the most important things about having that together is that that follows really the, the decision by the Select Board in the public-private partnership agreement that was adopted on July 10th of 2017 by the Select Board. This is the first time that something has come before the Select Board, having to do with a major change in an agreement between a, a public body and the town, or a public and private partnership. And we certainly applaud the library and the library corporation and the town in trying to develop an agreement that makes it more relevant to what happens now and what is envisioned for the future of the library. Certainly, an 11-year-old agreement wasn't serving very well. But it's very, very important that the process that, that was agreed upon and is part of the policies of the Select Board be followed, again, because this is the very first time that this has happened. And how, how this, how this new agreement is handled and how it is voted upon by the Select Board has a far-reaching effect on the future of openness and transparency in the governing of the town of Concord, as was envisioned by the Town Governance Committee and put into process by the Public Private Partnership Study Committee and the Select Board in 2017. This will test that agreement and whether the town continues to abide by what the Select Board agreed at that time or decides to set that aside. So I ask you all to keep in mind what a precedent-setting situation this is.
Jean, can I ask you what you believe is not being followed?
I think the idea of having an MOU that would come along later, that would not, that's not part of that, that whole doc, body of document, is, is the piece that we were most concerned about. I think we were, we were fairly alarmed that the, the Library Committee had not even, hadn't been part of the development of this, but hadn't even had an opportunity to read it before it was going to be voted upon was a concern. But you've rectified that. You've rectified that.
We had a meeting scheduled last week that for some reason didn't happen.
Right. My understanding was it was a kerfuffle on the posting of the agenda.
I have no idea what it was about, but the idea that somehow we weren't giving them an opportunity to review and comment on that, I just don't think it's fair.
I can, I can say I.
From the public's view of what we knew, no one on the Library Committee had seen the document.
It was, it was in a Select Board packet. I don't know if it was last week, but I did transmit it to the library director with the expectation that it was going to be transmitted by her to the Library Committee. And I think, if Mike, if I could just make a comment on the MOU, because I, because I think I get interested in the comments we're hearing, it needs, it needs a little more work, and we didn't want the rest of the agreement to not get done over something that was a relatively new thing. And if we fail in reaching an MOU and decide at the end by December, you know, we really just can't make it work, that section can just stands, you know, kind of isolated and unaffected, and the rest of the agreement can go forward. There's not, that's why the MOU is, we tried to say, we want us to make a statement in here that we think this is a good idea to pursue. We don't want to be bound to anything because we don't know the full extent of the details, but we want to commit to each other as in a, we want to, you know, make a commitment and agree that we should pursue this, and if we end up getting to the end and it doesn't work, then we'll just either revise, take that MOU language out, or, you know, amend it further. But that, that was the thing. It was, it needs more work than, than we had in our timeline to do. We don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater, so to speak.
So maybe an approach to that could be to, to edit what's in that, that current document and take out the section about the maintenance, let the rest of the document go forward, and then, once an MOU is, is developed, add that as an amendment to the document. You've got both, you've got both of those things, sir.
I don't think we can, Jean, I don't think we could take it, I don't think we could take the section out, but we could certainly put back in the document old language as to how maintenance is currently managed under the current agreement, and then when we have new language, it could be done. I think that could certainly be.
I guess I'm confused by that, because I think we wanted to show that this is the discussion we're having through this operating agreement. I mean, I'm happy, like I said, I'm happy with Mike's suggestion, and we'll keep working at it.
We could drop a note as a footnote to the agreement. It's all right. That's a good point. Thank you very much, Jean. Just Terry, before, we won't have a chance to talk in a minute, so let me make sure. Do I see any additional hands from the public? I don't see any, so why don't I ask Linda if she would propose a motion to close the public hearing? Wait, wait, hold on. Don't do that. Let me, let me ask a question before to the Select Board. Dory, do I see your hand up? All right, just hold it, hold that thought and unmute yourself in preparation for talking.
Yeah, thank you.
So a suggestion as to whether we want to, after we've heard from Dory, close the public hearing, do what I said previously, and that is solicit the input from the library corporation and get it on our agenda for next week, or just continue the public hearing. Does members of the Select Board have a point of view about that? Is that a point of view, Terry?
Well, I think it's related. I, I have a question related to what Mav Pardee said. I didn't.
No, it's not related.
I, I don't know how I will come out on this, and I just want to know if town council has reviewed this draft.
I, not that I know of.
I don't think so either.
All right. Well, then, okay. I think that would be an important thing to do before we proceed.
Yeah, I think that was a good point brought up, to get it reviewed, that's for sure. And members of the Select Board have a point of view on continuing the public hearing? Jane?
Mike, so what you're asking us is, do we continue the public, leave the public hearing open, continue to the next Select Board meeting so that the Library Committee can give us input?
No, it's really a technicality. We can close the public hearing. What I suggested at the beginning was we close the public hearing, and I've been in contact with the Library Committee, and I've asked them to please forward any questions concerned, comments, or whatever, to me by the end of the week. We would put this item back on the agenda for next Monday, August 3rd's meeting, and we would hear from the Library Committee, whatever they've got to say, and then we would decide as a Select Board what to do. And I've just talked myself into continuing the public hearing. So, before we close the public hearing, Dory had her hand up, so you're on.
I did, thank you, thank you, Mike, very much.
You could just identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Dory Keough, 51 MacArthur Road, and also a former member of the former P3 Committee. One of the reasons that the League of Women Voters was involved in this whole process was because it recommended strongly to the Town Governance Committee that there be an open, open policy and an open discussion of any kind of a public-private partnership. This was a new venture, this is a new direction that the towns all over the country, this is not the local league, but the national league are taking. And I think there have been suggestions made today, and particularly about this MOU, which I don't think anybody is particularly satisfied about, how that can be added on or not added on. It's integral to the whole part of any kind of a change in operation. I don't understand what the rush is. I understand that there's new policies and procedures with the curator, but things are done without an agreement in place. I think the understanding can be set in place of the way that you want to proceed. But I would like to see this whole thing presented as an entire entity, and I am troubled, as has been mentioned before by other people, that one of the keys that we mentioned in our recommendation to the Select Board in 2016 and '17 was that it's be a completely open project. This is the one which is setting the standard now, because as Jean mentioned, this is the first time that there will have been any kind of a major change in any town public-private agreement. And so, therefore, I'm glad you're carrying it forward, but I would like to see it carried forward with some of the suggestions that have been added today. Diane's was particularly, I think, appropriate. Let people see what this whole thing is. Frankly, this has been going on for a long, long time. I think there's no point in rushing to a fast conclusion. It can take more time and more thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on the agreement between the town and the Library Corporation to August 3rd, 2020.
Mike, will that be enough time, or Stephen, will that be enough time for Town Council to review? Because I don't think we should vote to adopt it until we have that review. And even to see, maybe we are going to need a review by the AG's office, hopefully not, but I think we need enough time for those reviews.
Yes. Pardee?
It's not a review by the AG's office, it's a review by the Ethics Commission, because they're the ones who would look at this and understand that just our-
I think the path forward for us would be to get this in front of Town Council, he would be, you know, would be able to advise us on whether this needs to go there. All right, so why don't we put it off for two weeks, and that ought to give us, I really don't like the remarks, though, that this hasn't been an open process. We've done everything that's asked of us. We've included everyone we could think of including in this. And I'm happy to continue the public hearing to get additional input from our council, and if necessary, from the Ethics Office. I think the idea of just reverting to the language on maintenance that was in the contract to begin with is a good one. So, I'll ask Linda.
Yeah. One of the thoughts I'm having right now is, I'm wondering, Mike, if we might want to continue the public hearing until next week, gather the additional comments that may come from the Library Committee, as well as any further comments from the public. And then, we may have some, there may be some changes that we want to see. And then, a following meeting after Town Council, and any changes that parties may make to this could be considered in the Select Board vote at that time. So, in other words, I don't see how we can get all this done in one session, even if we postpone the public hearing for two weeks. So, I'd rather do it incrementally.
Okay, well, why don't we just, why don't we continue the public hearing until August the 10th, and let's put it on our agenda for next week, to just take the input from the Library Corporation, if that's available to us, and then we'll just take it from there. I don't want to just keep having public hearing after public hearing. So, we'll put it on our agenda for next Monday to take whatever input we've gotten. I'll suggest that Mario, Sherry, Stephen and I get together sometime and see if we can deal with the maintenance part of that. I think we'll probably be able to. Does that seem reasonable? I don't have a strong point of view about it. I'm happy to put her on two weeks in or off if we need to.
I think in terms of the maintenance thing, hearing the feedback, I think we'll just put a more generic placeholder. We thought that was a pretty generic placeholder. Put something more generic than that in and just set that aside and work on it on a separate track, and come back when we're ready.
Linda?
Well, I'm trying to think about this in terms of, one, allowing Town Manager and yourself and others who have been working on this to incorporate whatever additional information you want to move forward with, based on public comment today and perhaps next week, and then still giving you, giving time for all that to happen before it comes back to the Select Board. So, if anyone else has thoughts about this, I think it would be.
I agree with Linda, and I wouldn't want to see the maintenance agreement come off completely and go back to the old language. I think it was a very creative idea to put that in. It's just that it's not finished yet, and that's what's making us uncomfortable. But to go all the way back, I don't really want to do that. So, if we just need more time, as some have suggested, I mean, how, it depends how, maybe you can come up with something in the next few weeks, and we can get everything in there. That would be the most ideal situation.
No. I think what we're going to do is, we're going to get a different language in there for the maintenance business. We're going to check with Town Council and find out about the ethics issue that was raised, and I think that's a very important one. And we're going to get input from the Library Committee. I think we just let two weeks go by, we'd have enough time to get all of those things done. We can have a little public hearing on the 10th, and hopefully, we can get this thing wrapped up.
Mike, I have one question. So, I think one of the things that Linda's saying is that, based on some of the things that we've heard, if we want to make some, we are saying we're going to be making some changes, at what point do we do that? I think Linda might be saying we need to do that before the Select Board votes. Is that what you're saying, Linda, that you'd like to see any incorporated changes, and then the vote would take place?
Yes, to finish the public hearing sooner, so that you, all of you working on this, have time to weigh all of the things that we've heard before, and then get to Town Council, et cetera, then before it comes back to the Select Board. So, I was envisioning a public hearing prior to the second meeting, perhaps, when we would, as a Select Board, be ready to move forward. If that makes sense?
So, say it as a motion, and let's move on.
Move to continue the public hearing on the library agreement currently under discussion until August 3rd?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, before I ask the clerk to call a roll, but then the intent is on the 3rd, we'll have made some progress, and we're likely to continue the public hearing until the 10th, and make the final adjustments. Is that what you're thinking, Linda?
I was suggesting that we continue the public hearing to the 3rd, along with some discussion that the Select Board might have regarding the Library Committee's comments.
Let's just take it from there, then, and then, on next Monday, when we have our public hearing, we can decide then what to do as a follow-up step. So, there's a motion. Any other discussion of the motion by the board? All right, seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hodgekis? You're muted. Ms. Hodgekis?
Sorry, aye.
Okay. Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note it passes unanimously, and let me thank all of you that came this evening for this hard public hearing and for your input. It's greatly appreciated, and we'll look forward to continuing this on the 3rd. The next item on our agenda is the approval of tour guide renewal applications. So, we have memorandum with tour guides, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the new tour guide license applications per the memo from the Town Manager's Office sent to the Select Board dated July 24th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hodgekis?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you, and I note it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the fiscal 20-year-end transfer. Ms. LaFleur, are you with us?
I am.
Good evening.
Mike, we have, excuse me, Mike, we have a second tour guide motion?
We do, I'm sorry, pardon me. Please go ahead, Linda.
Okay. Move to approve the new tour guide renewal applications per the memo from the Town Manager's Office sent to the Select Board dated July 24th, 2020.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hodgekis?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you, and I note that that too passes unanimously, and now we're to the fiscal year-end transfer, Ms. LaFleur.
Thank you. I have one additional fiscal 20 transfer to present to you this afternoon, and it was presented to the Finance Committee last Thursday and approved at their meeting. The final transfer is a request to move $39,000 from snow removal, which is line 18, to Social Security and Medicare, which is line 38. The reason for the deficit in Social Security and Medicare is generally the result of an increase in the number of part-time employees who, for whom the town paid into Social Security and not a pension assessment. So, we've just, we've had an increasing number of part-time versus full-time employees. And so, we do have a deficit there that was discovered as we were going through the closing process, and we're requesting that that money be moved from snow removal. We had budgeted $625,000 in snow removal for fiscal 20, and only expended $538,000, leaving a balance of $86,567. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm just wondering what the reason is for the increase in part-time employees? Is it due to COVID turnover, or what the reason is?
No, it's not really, it's not at all related to COVID-19 or the pandemic response. It's just, we have had a lot of turnover in the past couple of years, and as we're doing recruitment, sometimes you might find that you have better qualified part-time people, and you're able to make accommodations with part-time people versus full-time people.
Are there any other questions, Ms. LaFleur? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Okay. It's authorized by MGL Chapter 44, Section 33B. Move to approve a year-end transfer, budget transfer line item through of $39,000 from line item 18, snow removal, to line item 38, Social Security and Medicare, which is needed to close FY '20.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Okay, Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hodgekis?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you, I note it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a letter of support for Concord's transfer fee home rule petition. Relatively straightforward, our bill is in the Senate, but a number of our sister city bills are in the House, and they are making progress. And in addition, there are amendments being proposed that would essentially enable home rule petitions for transfer fees in support of affordable housing. And this item is on our agenda, simply to authorize the Chair to develop letters of support that can go to our representatives and the chairs of the various committees in support both of our home rule petition and the amendments to the House bills that would allow home rule petitions to be a part of the legislative package. And Linda, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you've captured it.
All right. So, if there's any discussion on that, if not, I would entertain a motion. Is there any discussion? I don't see any hands. So, Linda?
Okay, I'll give it a try here. Move to authorize the Chair to send a letter in support of Concord's transfer fee home rule petition to our state legislative representatives, or the current relevant chamber or committee chairs where it is being debated, currently listed as House Bill 4879 with Addendum 129.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jane, would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hodgekis?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
There are no committee nominations, so we'll turn to committee appointments.
That was a unanimous vote, correct?
Yes, yes, it was. Thank you. So, committee appointments.
Move to appoint Des Fiore of 309 Strawberry Hill Road to the Historic Districts Commission for a term to expire on April 30th, 2023.
Second?
Second.
Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hodgekis?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you, and move to pass it unanimously. The next item on our agenda is committee liaison reports. I will go first, I have none. Yes. And I say that with thanks to Linda for pitch hitting for me at the Finance Committee meeting, which I was unable to attend. So, I would like to, again, Linda?
I attended the Finance Committee meeting where they discussed sustainable growth rate and five-year projections for the upcoming FinCom report. They also took affirmative action on Article 12, which is the authorization for the revolving fund. And I also attended the Concord Housing Development Corporation, where they graciously accepted, or gratefully accepted, a gift of $20,000 from the Middlesex Foundation. They also covered updates on Junction Village and 930 Main Street that are both making progress. And in terms of Junction Village, noted the award letter and over 20 years of work that it's taken to get to this point in that process. And they also noted that the TIF agreement is a key part of this and will be discussed at the public hearing on August 17th. That's all I have.
August, yes, August 17th. And Stephen, I, just before we turn to someone else, could you please make a note that we, I want to get that MOU redrafted, to change the number of years from 17 to 15, so we can get that done before we get to the public hearing, because we had a little bit of hiccup last time, it didn't get done until- of hiccup last time that didn't get done until right before and I'd like to avoid that possible.
So, sorry, you quiet there, Mike. So just make sure we, we amend the MOU with Junction Village from 17 to 15.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, who was next? Okay, Terri?
Okay, we need to recruit somebody for the capital planning task force. That is a short-term commitment until June of 2021 or even sooner we will be finished. So please think about applying and submit your green card. As Stephen mentioned, I, I attended the DPW meeting, CPW we call it here. Everybody else calls it DPW, Department of Public Works, so I still say that, sorry. So yes, Cambridge Turnpike is coming along very well now. They've completed the pedestrian railings, the curvings, and, um, they're going to be doing some more paving this week and next week. And very importantly, I want to state again about the water restriction. It's one day per week on the same day as your trash is collected. You should be watering between, up before 9:00 AM or after 5:00 PM. And the commission is watching this very closely. If we have good compliance, we won't have to go to the next level, which is a complete lawn watering ban. We really don't want to go to that level, but we're having some very hot, dry weather. So it's very important to get compliance on this. And the last item then I want to talk about is the fiscal policy committee of the Mass Municipal Association. Concord is a member, I'm the person from Concord who go, who attends. And I want to thank Stephen and Carrie for responding. They were looking for comments from policy members. They have sent a letter to Governor Baker, Speaker of the House DeLeo, and Senate President Karen Spilka. And I just want to read you very quickly a few sentences from that letter. It's about local aid. As you contemplate municipal and education funding for fiscal 2021, we ask that you do so considering the compelling need to protect the fiscal capacity of local government, knowing two certainties. One, cities and towns are on the front lines fighting the COVID-19 pandemic. And two, municipal services are essential to our state's economic recovery. And then this next section is in bold. This is why we are asking the Commonwealth to avoid any possible cuts to municipal and state aid accounts below 2020 levels and to increase appropriations where possible to fund state commitments, including the Student Opportunity Act and statutory reimbursement accounts. And, uh, we also ask the assessment on cities, towns, and school districts be capped at the fiscal 2020 level to avoid having that local aid payments fall below last year's level. So in particular, Concord wanted this part about the statutory reimbursement accounts, which includes our reimbursement for services for the prison. So thank you, Stephen and Carrie, for sending in that comment and that we're happy to incorporate it.
Thank you. Terri, Susan?
Yeah, I can go next. On the 21st, there was a meeting of the planning board and they had hearings on, uh, the first one was an application from Middlesex School to construct on an existing parking lot, an 11-bedroom, two-story modular transitional student housing building. And the purpose is if they have students who have come down with the virus, they can have them stay in that building until, uh, they're going to quarantine there. There were some questions about it, but it was quite favorably received by the board and they'll review the draft letter at the next meeting. The second hearing was a revisit of Minuteman Art's proposal, which they discussed at the last meeting. In the interim, the planning board members did a site visit, which seemed to address a lot of the questions and concerns that they had, once they understood the topography and the layout, in the, the context of the plan, in the, in the existing geography. And they're going to be reviewing the draft letter at the next meeting also. There were some comments on the, the MAPC draft, the Road Depot redevelopment vision. Some, uh, one was that the drawing, or the, the plan references four stories and 38 feet high, but the drawings, the illustrations don't, don't indicate that. So there's a little disconnect there. And that was pretty much their, the business of the planning board. Economic Vitality Committee met on the 22nd and talked about the movie that Stephen's already mentioned and the micro enterprise funds. The, the town received about $210,000, waiting for the applications, the application form to be received. Ashland is, is coordinating this for a number of towns. They also did a kind of take the pulse of the existing vendors there. Most of them talked about volume, volume is down, that's a big issue, especially for Verell, the, the food proprietors, it was interesting, Verell said that, that they were doing okay and Deborah said they were doing well, but the overarching issue is you have to work hard and it costs, work harder and it costs more to do business. So there was a, a discussion about forming a restaurant subcommittee to see what, what can be done to help restaurants and, um, and that, and again, the top issue was volume. One of the guests, Marie Foley, had attended a, a convention of, you know, virtual convention of businesses and their top concern was rent. And there was concern amongst vendors who think, you know, November, December is critical for most retail businesses and the success of that will determine for a lot of them whether they can continue to stay in business. So the discussion continued also on e-commerce and having a town's page. And Beth mentioned that any business, Beth Williams, the tourism manager, said that any business can put a free listing on, on the town's webpage. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Jane?
Okay, well, I didn't have a lot of committee meetings, but the one I did have was lengthy and spirited. The NRC met on, um, last Wednesday and a particular note would have been the, the three applications or intent of application, first one being the town for the Jarrow property. And I know that we're going to, there's a public hearing on that, on the, uh, public information, uh, uh, meeting tomorrow on the 28th. But this was a, um, sort of the, the NRC's first blush at looking at that, at the newly changed proposal. And it was very clear that the select board needs to be working very closely with the town manager and the, and the deputy town manager to make sure that when that proposal is ready for, um, for vote at the NRC, that it's seen as a town proposal because that's still, there, there was, there's still some pieces of it that the, the NRC was questioning, but really questioning via the select board's opinion. And we obviously haven't formed it yet. The other, the next one was on the Citizens Bank in West Concord, which has been proposed to, the Chase Bank is now moving into, and that was, as many of us know, there's, that's a contentious space. It's a contentious discussion about whether or not we need another bank there, et cetera, et cetera, as was the case with Jarrow. This is just the first discussion, so nothing was decided. And then the final, uh, notice of intent for application was on the Fenn School. This is their second, uh, second descrip, description of their intent to, uh, to put in a canoe launch dock. And they had this, uh, last week they'd offered a slightly changed configuration of the, of the dock. However, they also committed to wanting to put in a, uh, a permanent building to house 22 canoes. And while they, they did state their, their intent was to put it, that building, um, beyond the 50-foot no-build zone, it certainly created a huge conversation because the previous discussion had had, had, had them capping the number of canoes at six. I don't think we're anywhere close to being done with that at the NRC and I suspect that other committees may hear more. And then on a separate note, um, the, there was a discussion about something that I think we're going to hear about in the future to do with, uh, well, I'll, I'll wait till that comes. So.
Question, I didn't quite understand, is the NRC looking for something from the select board about Jarrow?
They were unclear as to whether or not the select board, where the authority of the rec committee went to produce, or the recreation and the, and the towns department presenting the new, um, the new proposal, whether that had been signed off on by the town, sort of what stage they were at and wanted to know whether the select board had endorsed the latest plans of, of the, of Jarrow, i.e. it's a town, it's a town facility. So they're looking to say, who do we, who do we go back to on our, our questions and concerns? We'd like this, like, more involved in this.
I don't know if I, the Jarrow public session is 6 o'clock tomorrow. I thought if I did not mention that in my town manager's update, then I, it was top on my list and I skipped over it apparently. So those of you who are still attending, please let your friends and colleagues know that that's tomorrow night at 6:00. By Zoom.
Thank you.
Um, question for Jane, Ben. He, so it sounds like the NRC has some questions that they want to ask us and is this something we need to be aware of that might come up at the public hearing tomorrow or these, or we don't know yet what their questions are or?
I think they're formulating them. I mean, this was the first discussion. I mean, this was not a antagonistic space. It was more of a, who do we bring our, um, where, where are you in the process? Is this the rec committees? You know, is it, it's a recreation facility, but it's a town facility. Who makes the final decision on what comes to us?
Okay, thank you.
Town manager will be able to clarify that if it comes to the public, at the public discussion tomorrow. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous correspondence received quite a bit, a lot about, as Jane mentioned, the new back proposal going into West Concord and obviously a lot of correspondence about the library agreement. So I tend to post those and so I opened up the floor now for public comments if there are any. If you're interested, make a public comment, sort of unmute yourself and I'll see you do that. And I don't see anybody unmuting themselves, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hachkis?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you, and I note it passes unanimously. Thank you all for attending and have a nice evening.
Thank you, you too.